Okay, it is now 7:30, so we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, January 7th, 2019. And I ask that you please rise for a brief invocation and be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as we commence the beginning of the year 2019, we are ever mindful of the many blessings that have been bestowed upon the community of Batavia over these many years, and we just ask that as we roll into the new year, that a special blessing be showered upon all of our city employees and public works and public safety and all those working force in administrative roles, that a blessing be showered on each and every one of them, that they can conduct their job in safety and without danger, and that we have a very successful year of service to the citizens of Batavia. We also ask tonight to remember Alderman Chanzet, who I am informed is in Delnor Hospital, undergoing some tests for some pains he has. So we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon him and that he have a very rapid recovery from his illnesses that he's now suffering from. Also tonight, we want to remember those from our community who are on foreign soil and defending the liberties of the United States of America, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon each and every one of those men and women as they go about their vital mission of defending our liberties. As always, we ask for direction and understanding and vision as we act on the various items of business that is coming before the City Council tonight, and then again, knowing that in our own hearts and minds, each of us is here to do what is, we feel, is in the best interest of our community in general. We ask for all these blessings. Amen.
Amen.
Alderman McFadden, would you lead us to the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the City Kirk to please call the roll.
Brown.
Here.
Rosato.
Here.
Atack.
Here.
Stark.
Here.
Chanzet.
Wolf.
Here.
Salvati.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Callahan.
Here.
Meitzler.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
Euer.
Here.
Saron.
Here.
McFadden.
Here.
Let the record reflect that thirteen of the fourteen members of the City Council are present and accounted for this evening's meetings, so we have the necessary quorum to conduct business. As item number four on the agenda reports, I am to acknowledge and ask everyone to please use the microphones as we conduct the meeting tonight, because, as you all know, this is being televised and recorded, and we want to make it easy for all those in the television audience to be able to hear what is being said and that we have a very understandable and open meeting. Also tonight, we'll move to item number five, which are to be items to be moved, added, or changed on the agenda. Alderman Atack, as Chairman of Governmental Services, do you have anything this evening?
No, I do not.
Anybody else? Okay, moving then to item number six, the presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Atack, would you present this, please?
The consent agenda reads as follows. Approvals: December 28th, 2018, payroll in the amount of $831,689.75. Accounts payable check register in the amount of $3,488,384.28. And city council minutes for December 17th, 2018. I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Atack, second by Alderman Stark for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Kirk, please call the roll.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosato.
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. Thirteen yes, no, no's, one absent. Moving to item number seven, which is appointments to paid-on-call recruits for the Batavia Fire Department, and I turn this over to Chief Daiki.
Good evening, everyone. I have two new paid-on-call elsewhere tonight, so Matthew and Trevor, cook them up. This is Matthew. He lives in St. Charles. He's a basic operations firefighter and an EMT. And Trevor, he lives in Geneva, and he went to Wobansie for his basic firefighter certificate. He also has hazmat certificate and a vehicle operations certificate.
Gentlemen, if you'd step with me up here to the front. We've got to have you turned and faced that way, because we've got to get your picture out of that camera back there, so that everybody can see who you are and what you're going to do.
What you look like as you take the oath of office. I would just acknowledge to you that you've got to be careful when you take one of these oath of office to be a paid-on something in the city of Batavia, because forty-nine years later, you could be standing here like I am as the mayor. So if you'd raise your right hands and repeat after me, I instate your names.
I, Matthew Jordan.
I, Trevor Olson.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the position of paid-on-call recruit.
To the position of paid-on-call recruit.
Position of paid-on-call recruit.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
In the city of Batavia.
In the city of Batavia.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Dusan, we swear.
Dusan, we swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
To the position of paid-on-call recruit.
To the position of paid-on-call recruit.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
With the Batavia Fire Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Welcome. I'd just like to welcome both of those gentlemen to the city of Batavia family, and I wish you both healthy and successful careers in the occupation of firefighting. It's a very honorable profession, perhaps one of the most honorable ones you can choose, so you're to be commended for your willingness to step into what can be a very interesting and dangerous and challenging role, and thank you for your willingness to bring your talents to our community. So thank you very much. Best wishes for the future. Okay, moving to item number eight, matters from the public or items that are not on the agenda. Do we have anybody this evening? We have nobody. Okay, we will move then to item number nine, which is a presentation about the Ronald McDonald House. And you want to tell everybody who you are, so that everybody knows?
My name's Gianna Jensen, and I'm a student at Rotolo Middle School in seventh grade. I recently took, taken over the project of collecting pop tabs throughout the elementary schools, the high school, and I started one in the middle school. And I started doing this because my former fourth-grade teacher, who I'm still really good friends with today, she was a really great teacher, and she helped me a lot. Her family ended up having to go to Ronald McDonald House because their, one of their children was born about a month early, so they had to stay there for a long, a long time, and it really got close to me, because she was upset for a while, and she hit her, and it kind of hit me. And so I decided to start up programs in multiple schools, so still haven't even started them yet. So Grace McWayne, Hooverwood, and Rotolo haven't, didn't start programs before I was there, and I was able to reach out with two of the three principals and start programs collecting there to raise money for Ronald McDonald House. Ronald McDonald House is a place that provides housing for families, so they can go to the doctors for their children, and they don't have to worry about costs for housing and hotels, and they have places to stay if they can't even afford to go places, and they can focus on their children getting better, instead of focusing on finding somewhere to spend the night. And I just, I want to expand this project into a citywide event and possibly put collection boxes within the PD, because we work with the Batavia Police Department in this, and the library, and possibly the fire department.
And so you want to explain, people can go then to this PD or the police or fire department or City Hall or the library and bring those?
They can bring the pop tabs to the library anywhere and drop them off into the collection boxes that we provide.
And the pop tops are, are there a particular brand of?
It doesn't matter what brand. You can get them off of, we have people bring them from soda cans to like wet cat food.
Okay.
Off of there.
And McDonald House gets credit then for the number of them you bring in?
Yes.
They get a financial contribution? Is that what?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, it's the most honorable idea. I commend you and thank you for doing it, and hopefully you're getting cooper, I have to believe that you're getting cooperation from the Batavia Police Department. And I would, would trust that the library and probably the fire department would join in with them, so certainly offer my endorsement of the idea, and I'm sure the City Council joins with me in that. So you're to be commended for somebody of your age and stature, that you're out here leading this cause, and it's a most worthy cause and one that really does do some really nice things for people who are in need of having nice things happen to them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your Honor, if I could, well, she's still up here. Somebody you should contact in town would be Craig Foltos over at Foltos Barbershop. He does an event every year that helps fund Ronald McDonald House, and he would be a good one to talk to about things that they may need or things that you might be able to do to set up like a yearly fundraiser. Okay?
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you. Thank you for coming down. All right, the next thing is item number ten, which is a presentation by the Batavia Chamber of Commerce, and we're honored to have the Executive Director and President of that organization, Holly Dickman, here. Holly?
Hello, Mayor. And as the mayor said, Gianna, to these fine gentlemen, in forty-nine years, they may become mayor, if you continue on this path, you might become the Citizen of the Year. So keep up the good work. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak this evening. We have a bunch of events coming up in January, and just wanted to share some of them with you. On Wednesday, January 9th, we have our BC Squared, our morning networking event at the Comfort Inn and Suites, and that's at 7:30 a.m. We have a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the new owner of El Taco Grande on Thursday, January 10th at 4:00 p.m., so join us. I think you might have some food. Networking it at My Place Hotels, that's the new hotel near the Turf Room. That's at 5:00 p.m. on Wednesday, January 16th, and we will be collecting funds for Lazarus House. The 2019 program that we've partnered with the Valley Industrial Association this year will be centered on marketing, and so that educational program will kick off with marketing strategy and where to start. That's eight p.m., or 8:00 a.m. on Thursday, January 17th, and again, that's housed at the Valley Industrial Association. And one of our largest events of the year is our Inspire Awards, and that will be housed at Marmion's Abbey Farms again this year, so we would love to have you all join us to celebrate the Ole Award recipients, which are the businesses that have invested a lot in either locating themselves in Batavia, God bless you, Roman, or for expansion projects or things that they have invested financially in making their businesses stay here in Batavia. So this year's recipients, I haven't named these off to you before, is Weedy Corp., Sierra Trading Post, Aldi Store on Randall Road, Denny's, Burrito Peria, Krabby Boil, Pell Joey's, and Aqua Viva. They've all made substantial contributions to the aesthetic of our business community, and we are going to be rewarding them for that through our Ole Awards. That is, again, at the Inspire Awards at Marmion Abbey Farms on Thursday, January 24th at 6:00 p.m. And our, of course, we will be celebrating our Citizen of the Year, Georgine O'Dwyer, and our Spirit of Batavia Award recipients this year, the Batavia United Way. So we would love to have you here celebrating with us on Thursday, January 24th. The next thing is I have with us, with me this evening, one of our great new, newer businesses to Batavia. This is Matthew Perkins, and he is from Business to Business Logistics, and they are located in the Campana Building.
Thank you, Holly.
Welcome.
Good evening, all. Just wanted to briefly introduce ourselves. We're new business residents to Batavia, not new to business, though. Business to Business is about eight years old. Started off in Sugar Grove, moved to North Aurora, where we met Holly and the team over at the Chamber. Became Chamber members a little over a year ago, and after everything kind of settled down from 2017, quarter four, as you all remember, we moved into the Campana Building just a couple months ago. Love it over there. Business to Business Logistics is a third-party logistics provider, so if anyone in the warehousing, trucking, manufacturing industries might know who we, might know what we do, but we are a facilitator of getting your freight from point A to point B. We have crafty ideas on how to do it in a cost-effective manner. We are rapidly growing as well. Since moving two months ago, we've added six headcount to our office, looking to add many, many more, trying to find local at all possible, so anyone that might be looking for more sales-oriented, high-revenue-earning positions, we are hiring. And we will be having a, we have not exercised our ribbon-cutting yet. Sir Mayor Shelkey will be doing that sooner than later. Also looking to be possibly hosting a networking event. If Holly's okay with it, I'd like to invite any and all of you to it, once it is announced, to come experience the office. I don't know how many of you have been inside Campana, but our, our office on the third level is awesome. It looks just like a city loft at this point, and it's a very cool building, so really enjoying it in there.
Well, we welcome you to Batavia. We wish you many, many years of business growth and success here, and certainly feel free to call upon my staff or my staff or the city staff or the Alderman if you have any concerns or questions or anything about what's going on.
Will do.
We're always anxious to see new businesses that are growing and adding employees come into town. It's a very positive trend to have.
Absolutely, and if, with your permission, I'd like to just hand out my card. If any of you are ever in a need of any freight services or just want to talk or learn more about our company, I'm always available.
Okay. Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next one then is going to be the Fire Chief or the City Administrator. One of you is going to handle this. You are?
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, the city has an intergovernmental agreement with the Batavia Township and Countryside Fire Protection District, and that agreement has expired at the end of 2018, and so it kind of caught them by surprise, so they're looking to extend it for three months until they meet with representatives of the city to negotiate the next agreement that will last probably about three years or so, is what the last one did. So this is just an extension to keep it going until they can meet and discuss the new agreement.
Well, I certainly would encourage this. This fire district has been in place, and we have been, they have been contracting with us for sixty-two years without fail. I don't think they've ever not failed to make their payment. One time, we worked out a deal with them where they bought a fire truck from us. So we've done a lot of creative things with the fire district, and it's been a very good working relationship. So I would encourage our involvement in approving a three-month extension of their current agreement, so they, the staff can get together and work with them, bring to you a final agreement, which we then would probably bring to committee, but I guess this kind of surprised them. Somebody hadn't read the documents recently or something.
Yeah, somebody, I think, just all of a sudden read one of the documents and realized that sometime in December that it was going to expire, so.
When, when this comes back, can we get a map or a list to show what city, what township and protection district, so that everybody understands that, knows where the boundaries are and everything?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, those are, these are the folks that have those big red, white, red and white numbers out in front of their house, and the numbering system is all based on the intersection State and Madison in downtown Chicago. And so if you come out to Batavia, you'll see that you're on a, everything on Batavia's address, zero south, because if State and Madison lines up as a crow would fly, it's Fabian Parkway, if you can believe that. But that's the direct line with State and Madison in downtown Chicago is Fabian Parkway. So everybody here is zero something south, or else maybe, I guess it goes down two or three miles, so it may be two south. And then if you look at their east-west numbers, we are about thirty-four to thirty-seven W, whatever it is. And so whichever road you're on, east or west, you have either an S number or a W number based on your distance from State and Madison in downtown Chicago.
Interesting.
So it's easy for us to figure it out, because it's a region-wide system that all these fire districts in unincorporated areas use to identify where to find people. So if somebody calls up and says, "My house is on fire and I live at nine, or twenty-south 480," we know that they're in Will County someplace, and they got the wrong number.
We're not helping.
Chief, have anything else you want to add?
No, but we do, you do have to.
I know, I need to have somebody here make a motion. Alderman Wolf?
Yes, I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 19-007-R, intergovernmental agreement between the city of Batavia and the Batavia Township and Countryside Fire Protection District.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Nettler, for the approval of the continuation of the fire district agreement for three months, which is Resolution 19-007-R. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Thirteen yes, no, no's, none absent.
Thank you.
That's a good indication of where we're going to go with that. Okay, Administrator's Report.
Good evening.
Few things to share with you.
Everybody who still has a live Christmas tree, you can put those out with your regular refuse for advanced disposal to pick up, and this is the last week that they'll be picking them up for free. After that, you can still put them out with your refuse, but they need a sticker. The city is a member of the Illinois Municipal League, and one of the new free services that they have for all members is a service called Grant Finder. It's, it allows members to search a database of over 10,000 different available grant programs, and this should help us to identify some grant funding for projects, even things that we have in our strategic action plan. We can look for assistance with dam removal, with bike path extension, with, and even in the past, we've used grant funding for road and sidewalk work that we've done in the low-to-moderate-income areas of our communities. So we think this is going to be a really nice resource to assist us. In community and economic development, there is a tremendous amount of activity still. We received a resubmital for plans for the Nagel Industrial Building. Also, we are scheduling various kickoff meetings for the strategic plan initiatives associated with community and economic development. Staff has been informed that the industrial properties, which are located at 1300 and 1350 South River Street, which you'll recognize as the former Amcor Building, those have been sold to a St. Charles-based company called SD Wheels. They are a distributor of automobile wheels in long-range business expansion and consolidation move into Batavia. The sale of this significant industrial property has been pending for several months, but the parties completed their negotiations at the end of last year, and they're also planning additional site and building interior improvements at that location. We've also learned that Batavia's largest employer, Suncast, is going to be leasing some 143,000 square feet of the 101 to 121 North Redant Building. Also, tomorrow, staff will be attending a Real Estate Journal's 17th Annual Commercial Real Estate Forecast Conference. That's going to be held at the Hyatt Regency in Chicago. We have a booth there, so we're hoping to attract even more businesses into our community by, by showing them the, the great attributes that this city has. We have received the environmental indemnification agreement, as well as the second amended RDA back from Shodin, and we have plans to meet with them this Wednesday to finalize those agreements, so hopefully we can get those on the committee or the whole agenda for next week. And then finally, there has been quite a bit of discussion about the new signage that we have down on the dam. I think, you know, it's pretty large, but it is exactly the type of signage that our environmental consultants recommended as what the IEPA requires in order to warn people about the dangerous conditions, particularly in the boil that's in front of that dam. And also, it was a requirement in order for us to be able to ensure against risks associated with those who might be injured by the dam. So the, we have created a webpage for the dam signage product, project, and so you can see that link on our city website, cityofbatavia.net. And that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Any questions, Aurora, tonight?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Committee Reports. Alderman Brown, Community Development.
Thank you, Your Honor. Couple meetings to announce. Tomorrow evening's committee of the whole is going to be scheduled for 7:00 p.m. A couple of the community development items that are on the agenda are some annexation of some unincorporated islands throughout the town that the community development department's been working on getting cleaned up, and then also the potential sale of a piece of property on 2150 West Main Street, that's out there by the Tower Car Wash. Those are the two items that Community Development has to discuss. There's some other items that I'm sure the other chairs will bring up. Plan Commission, as far as I know, is scheduled for Wednesday. I didn't see anything about any cancellations, so that's scheduled for this Wednesday, the 9th, at 7:00 p.m. And then Historic Preservation is also scheduled for Monday, the 14th, at 5:30. That's all I have.
Any questions? Government Services, Alderman Atack?
Government Services doesn't have anything on the calendar yet for this month.
City Services, Alderman Wolf?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have tomorrow night, some surplus property, police towing contracts, warranty deeds on Deer Path and Main Street, and I think that's all.
Okay. Public Utilities, Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have, we'll discuss tomorrow night Task orders number 10 and number 11 with Engineering Enterprises for rehabilitation work to water treatment plants 1 and 2.
Okay. All right, do we have other business from the City Council? All right, item 15, the Mayor's Report. I'd just like to use a couple minutes here to talk about Mayor Weisner in Aurora, who all of you know passed away. And I think it's appropriate that I do this, because Mayor Weisner and I were born into this town about six weeks apart. I'm about six weeks older than he is, but when we were babies and we were little kids, our parents were friends. So I think there's probably someplace a picture of us both in strollers with our mothers pushing them or something like that. So my relationship with him goes way back to the beginning, and for many, many years, all through his childhood, he lived over at the corner of South Lincoln and Main Street, in the house there on the northwest corner, and had a very prominent role in Batavia. He, he was the altar boy over at Holy Cross Church for, and one of the favorites of Monsignor Donovan, who the, now the Wilson Street Bridge is named after the Monsignor. He lived to be 103 and was a longtime friend of Tom and myself, and although I wasn't a member of Monsignor's church, I had the opportunity to have his friendship for many years. But Tom was really, I think, one of his, Monsignor's favorite altar boys, because Tom always knew what he was supposed to be doing and how to do it and how to present, and he carried that trait with him, and later in life, he ended up moving himself down to Aurora, where his then-new wife was from, and his wife, Marilyn, was the first one to get into politics. She ran for the Kane County Board and got elected as a Democrat to the Kane County Board in the mid-1970s, which at that point in time, from a political perspective, was quite an achievement, to be in your early twenties and get elected as a Democrat to the Kane County Board. And I can remember my old mentor and compadre, Philip Beelstrom, was then Kane County Board Chairman, and he was kind of struck by the fact that this young girl from Aurora was down there as a Democrat on the board. He used to say it offered her some, you know, some challenges and some learning experiences, and I can remember Tom was always right there with her as she went through what was quite a interesting political role that she had for a couple years, but she was one of the folks that really helped kind of settle in and get it organized, the Tri-City Ambulance Service. a interesting political role that she had for a couple of years. But she was one of the folks that really helped kind of settle in and get it organized, the Tri-City Ambulance Service that we now have today, because originally, the county board was handling that service because there was an unsure who, because it was both inside the cities and outside the cities of Geneva and St. Charles and Batavia, and there was a lot of confusion about that until we got some more state law passed that allowed the cities to kind of take it over. So all things being considered, she was a player in that. But then they left the area, Tom and Marilyn and his wife, and they went to the Fiji Islands as the members of the US Peace Corps. And they were over there for five years, and then returned back to Aurora. And soon thereafter, Tom got hired by the City of Aurora doing various, I think he got originally hired as the Director of Emergencies and Disaster Services, and then ascended to other positions. And eventually, was there for, I don't know, 19, 20 years in those positions, and eventually ran for mayor of Aurora and got himself elected, and he served three terms. And to him goes a lot of the credit, much of the credit, for certainly the renovation and the revival of the Paramount Theater. That was probably one of his proudest accomplishments. And certainly, another one was the creation of the Rivers Edge Park over on North Broadway, and north of the downtown area there. He spent, and they've since have, I was invited to come to a ceremony last year in which they named a large portion of that park after Tom, and his name's on the sign down there now. But in the meantime, he was always, he always had a soft spot in his heart for his old hometown. And so we agreed to do such things as our old 1948 American of France fire truck that we had in Batavia, which is quite now a classic antique. It now sits down at the Aurora Fire Museum, because Tom worked with the executive director down there to find it a home, and they've set up, if you've ever been in and seen it, it's quite a display of that truck and the role it had in a famous fire in Aurora. So it's, it's very kind of neat type of thing. But I will tell you that Tom was very much involved in a couple of things that many Batavians use on a daily basis. After he got himself elected mayor of Aurora, he got himself appointed to the Illinois Toll Highway Authority, and one of the first things he did was get the intersection down at Farnsworth Avenue and A-88 rebuilt to the grand fashion it is. You may remember, that was kind of a Kitty Wampus thing that was kind of halfway there, really. And he got it all rebuilt, so now thousands of Batavians use that on a weekly basis, going either east or west. And another one that he had a major role in was the erection of the stoplight down at Redant Road and Butterfield. And so he was also the one that I will tell you helped kind of straighten out what was kind of a messy political situation as it was evolving down at Kirk and Butterfield, where we had people trying to say that they bought a house in the Savannah subdivision, but they lived in Batavia, and it was just a lot of, lot of rolling jokes down there for a while, but we kind of got most of that straightened out a little bit, so it's now working down there. And the nice part about it was, he played kind of a major role in the, the Aurora Outlet Mall, as you probably all know, is within the boundaries of the Batavia School District. And there was quite a dicey situation down there about how that was all going to unfold, and took a lot of work on a lot of people's parts. And I sat in on several meetings down there because there was a lot of people in Aurora didn't want that thing to be in the Batavia School District, but we're dealing with school district boundaries, which go back to about 1849, and it's almost impossible to undo school district boundaries these days. It's a real chore, and if not everybody's agreeing, it's probably not going to get done. So we worked out an agreement, and so the Batavia School District now gets a really nice slice of cash every year for being the host of that facility within their school district. So I will tell you that at the end of the day, Tom never forgot where he came from. And I think he always had this very soft spot in his heart for the City of Batavia, and we were blessed to have him down there because he really did do a lot of positive things for us. And more on a regional basis, I worked with him for a number of years, and he became the mayor in the area who was the expert on water. And he knew where all these aquifers were, and Lake Michigan water, and how far that can and cannot come, and he had answers to all the questions. And losing him was a real loss when we didn't have him at the table, because he really got some designs on how all the water in the future is going to work as far as it goes to the deep-water shell aquifers that we take most of our water from now. And he deserves a lot of credit in the water world for kind of straightening out what was kind of a cloudy situation there for a number of years for governments as to how the water in the area worked. So I just am very saddened by his passing, and I just wanted to take a moment of Batavia time to say some nice things about one of our favorite sons, who went on to another place and did great things, but also helped us in the meantime. So Tom, we're going to miss him because he really was a friend to all of Batavia, and I think he was always very proud to call Batavia his original hometown. So that being said, I'm going to switch the subject to another kind of fun thing that's going to happen here, and I don't want to steal any thunder, but our friends up at the Batavia Library, and I think largely to the credit of George Sheets, the librarian, later this month, they are going to have a celebration up there commemorating the 150th anniversary of Samuel Clemens, alias Mark Twain, coming to Batavia, staying the night, writing a love letter to his future wife while he was here, and then giving a lecture that night to the Batavia Laconian Society. And I quite honestly wrote the first, the update of the Batavia History Book in 1978, and I had no idea this had even occurred. And then one day, I get elected mayor, and one day, I get a call from the University of Southern California, who had inherited the letter file of Mark Twain from his estate. And in this letter file, which they made a decision, they were going to publish it all in book form, and one of the letters in there, I believe, is dated January 29th, 1869. It was written by Samuel Clemens while he was in Batavia waiting to go and speak to the Laconian Society about innocence abroad. I think it was one of the books he wrote, but he was out on the circuit giving a speech about it. And so I had great question, because what was interesting was, is that Mark Twain came to Batavia, and I believe it was the 29th or the 20, I should have brought my book along. Anyway, he came here the night before, he had been up in Marshall, Michigan, which is kind of north of South Bend, Indiana, up just on the, above the Michigan-Indiana border, and he had given the same speech up there. He came to Batavia the next day and gave the speech here, and then the next day, he left here and went to Freeport and gave the speech there. And if you dug into the local newspapers that were then available, Beacon News was in business at that point, and they said that, in a very small, one, two-sentence description, that Mark Twain spoke in Batavia to a large crowd or something to that. Anyway, the Batavia Library has organized a, kind of a neat little celebration to commemorate Mark Twain's celebration, and as all of you know, when you walk in the front door of the Batavia Library, there's a full-size statue of Mark Twain sitting there on the bench, and that statue kind of spins off of this whole thing with Mark Twain. And this book that has the letter in it, it has been published. I have a copy of it. They have a copy of it in the Batavia Room at the library, if anybody's interested in seeing it. And when Mark Twain came to Batavia, he arrived here on the train from Marshall, Michigan, and I questioned how he could ma, that was a long trip to make in one day, to go from Marshall, Michigan to Batavia, and then out to Freeport. And he, well, he did it over three days, but that was even so in 1869. But we had a, our now-late Fire Chief, Assistant Fire Chief, Steve Lusted, was a real railroad history buff. So when this all came together, and I got a call from the University of Southern California, and it's mentioned in the book that I was facilitated and was assisting them in finding out information about Mark Twain's stay here. Steve Lusted did a marvelous little thing about how it would have, it could have very easily been done in 1869 using the railroad, and he tells the story that he would have come in and gotten off, well, what's now the Depot Museum, when it was over at Webster and South Van Buren Street, and that he would have probably the next day got on the Northwestern Downtown here, gone up to Geneva, and then gone out to Rockford and Freeport on that line. So it, it could be done, and I guess he did do it. But while he was here, he wrote this very intriguing love letter to his then-future wife, who I believe at that time was living in Freedonia, New York, which is real near the Pennsylvania-New York border and the far western edges of the state. If you go within that town today, there's a big park in the middle of the town dedicated to Samuel Clemens. But when he was there, he talks about, he arrived in this dirty, dingy little town, and it's kind of downtrodden, and he doesn't have any joy, and he has to reach in his pocket and pull out his photograph of his future wife, and that brings joy to his heart and enlightens his spirit and gets him through this difficult time in this dirty town that's full of ash over all the snow, and it's, I can, I can just picture this. I mean, everybody was burning coal and wood, and all the ash was coming out of those chimneys, and the snow was all dirty, so it probably was a dirty, dingy little town. So anyway, he goes off to this lecture, and apparently, it went over quite well. And as near as we can tell, it was either given in the basement of what is today the Congregational Church, or it was given down at the Revere House on South Batavia Avenue, which is now where the law offices are down there, and the building was tore down, or it could have been given down at the movie theater, later to become the movie theater where Kluber has the building here on South Shumway Avenue. We're not sure where it happened at, but we think it was one of those three locations. And while he was, while he was here, he got up and gave this lecture, and it was just fabulous, and everybody responded to him, and he got rousing in the paws, and just everybody made him feel so good. And as he got ready to go to bed in Batavia that night, he was just thrilled with how well things had turned around in this town and how nice it had all become. So it, it, you read the first couple paragraphs of that letter, though, boy, and you get a real dim view of Batavia in 1869. By one of the most famous writers in the history of America. So the library is going to do a thing, and I guess at the next council meeting, we're going to pass a proclamation that's already, I didn't write it, George Sheets wrote it, and it's really detailed, and it talks all about Mark Twain coming to Batavia and his stay, brief stay here. And that's the only time we know he was in town, but again, that's one of these kind of interesting relationships with the famous American history that our town seems to have, and nobody else around us does, because, you know, I go up to Geneva and St. Charles and want to see their Mark Twain letter, they don't have one. So it's, it's kind of a fun thing to have, and so kind of a very interesting memory that the town has, and I just wanted to pay a little tribute to that. So I've talked a lot tonight. Alderman Brown, you want to make a motion?
I'm over you during the City Council.